Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening at our City Council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Allenston?
Here.
Ray?
Here.
Cheatham?
Here.
Johnston?
Here.
Manon?
Here.
Here. Thank you. If you'd please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which, if you remain standing for the invocation will be offered by Tim Bridges from representing the Calvary Chapel.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thought it would be appropriate, the Peace Officers Memorial Day was yesterday, and to honor those who've been killed or disabled in the line of duty, but then also Memorial Day coming up, I thought if we could all join together and sing "God Bless America", and then as we think about that, let our hearts fill up with Pocatello as well, for our little corner of America. You ready to join me robustly?
It's the crowd.
And I wish Jim Johnston was here because it reminds me of Rotary Day, so I'd like to do that. Here we go.
God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with a light from above. From the mountains to the prairies, to the oceans white with foam. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, my home sweet home.
And Pocatello, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Hi now. That was great. Thank you, Jim, for that. That was great. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three, is a Consent Agenda Bill. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires any matter list, it can be moved to a separate agenda item. A. Minutes. Council may wish to consider, council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from Budget Development Meeting of April 25, 2019. B. Treasurer's Report. Council may wish to consider the Treasurer's Report for April showing cash and investments as of April 30, 2019. Good evening, Joyce.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Joyce Stroshine, Chief Financial Officer for the city. Okay. Total cash and cash equivalents represent 92 percent of the city's monies, $54,631,102. Long-term investments represent 8 percent of the city's monies totaling $772,164. So total cash equivalents and investments, $59,403,267. This amount is down by $560,603 for the month of April. On page two of the report, I've highlighted key receipts that we received during the month of April. Okay, we received a transit grant, federal, $102,881. Idaho power franchise fee, we received $122,202. This amount is down 1.73 percent from a year ago. Okay. Idaho state liquor tax, $126,994. This amount is down 5.29 percent from a year ago, and remember that 2 percent of that is being reallocated for magistrate court, so that's part of the reason why it's down as much as it is. So transit state grant, Idaho, $254,874. Sales tax revenue sharing is up 1.59 percent. We received $549,375. Then highway user fees, $675,515. This amount is up 1.62 percent compared to a year ago. Page three of the report, our report on the trust funds. So we have total cash and cash equivalents, $1,073,940. Total long-term investments, $3,881,443. Our total cash equivalents and long-term investments of $4,955,383. The total cash receipts received for the month was $24,577. We paid out, our total disbursements were $51,233. So the net change in cash and long-term investment was a decrease of $59,792 for the month. On page four of the report, I have put that to you, a summary of all the funds and their cash balances and the net change for the month. And I have highlighted for you the general fund, which is at an ending balance of $13,610,470. And we expended in excess $935,593 for the month of April. Okay. Page five of the report is discussion and analysis for your review. And then page six is the five-year trend of cash balances. This report continues to reflect a very strong cash position to the city, and I think it is also reflective of the policies that the council has adopted, such as the reserve policy and the budgeted retirements being moved to the retirement payoff account. And also, it shows a good, strong indication that our revenue estimates, we're following those and we're being accurate within that, because that's how you build reserves, you know, how you build up your cash, is by not expending, you know, receiving in more, or at least hitting your goal of what you should be receiving in, and not expending as much as you have budgeted for. So that just shows a really good, strong conservative approach in our budgeting process. And then we have three funds that are negative, but those funds are covered by pending receivables, whether they're from grants or from taxes. So, once again, a good, strong report for the city. That concludes my report. I'll answer any questions at this time.
Chief Counsel, any questions for Joyce? Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you.
Move on to C. Annual Shelter Advisory Board Reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Sharon Sibert to continue her service as a member of the Animal Shelter Advisory Board. Miss Sibert's term will begin June 2, 2019, and will expire June 2, 2021. D. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Darren Black to continue his service as a member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Mr. Black's term will begin June 7, 2019, and will expire June 7, 2021. E. Sister City Committee Reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Dana Olson to continue her service as a member of the African Sister City Subcommittee. Ms. Olson's term will begin June 8, 2019, and will expire June 8, 2023. F. Council Decision Hayden-Hayes Subdivision Short Plaid. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving the short plaid for Hayden-Hayes subdivision, which subdivides approximately .29 acres of land into two lots subject to conditions, the property is located at the intersection of Hayden Street and Hayes Avenue.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Cheatham.
I'd move to approve Agenda Item Number Three, the Consent Agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Adamson. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Lyra?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Four is Communication and Proclamations. We have no proclamations tonight, and so we'll move to Agenda Item Number Five. Is a Calendar.
Sorry, I was looking for.
I looked for scouts, too. Are there any scouts out there? I couldn't see them, and so I was moving on.
No, you're fine. I didn't realize I said it out loud.
It happens to me all the time. Agenda Item Number Five, Calendar Review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On June 2, at 9:00 a.m. will be a Budget Development Meeting. On June 2, at 5:30 p.m. will be a Clarification Meeting. And on June 2, at 6:00 p.m. will be a regular City Council meeting. Other events, Ross Park Aquatic Center opens Saturday, May 25, weather permitting. City offices will be closed Monday, May 27, for Memorial Day holiday. However, garbage compost and recycling pickups will be on schedule. Ready Chapel Open House at Mountain View Cemetery to be held on Monday, May 27, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Field of Heroes at Century High School, May 24 through May 27. As a reminder, dog licenses are on sale for half price through the end of May, and congratulations to all area high school graduates. We will move to Agenda Item Number Six, Child Care License Denial Appeal. Mahan. Kylie Mahan will be present to appeal the decision of police department staff, which denied Ms. Mahan's a childcare license. Janine?
Good evening, Mayor and Member of City Council. My name is Janine Perman. I'm the Licensing Officer with the Pocatello Police Department. After careful consideration, the Pocatello Police Department has denied Kylie Mahan a childcare license due to her admission of guilt for being in possession of marijuana and for failing to disclose that required information on the application form, both of which are basis for denial under the City Code, excuse me, the Childcare City Code.
How long ago was this?
2015.
Any other questions, Counsel? Okay. Ms. Mahan, are you out there?
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. The incident occurred on May 31 of 2015, and I was not charged or ticketed or cited or went to court for any of it. I recently had my childcare license, one in Pocatello and one in Chubak, prior to the incident. And I've also had two of my own kids, and I love working in childcare, so I would love an opportunity to assist the childcare.
Mr. Mahan? I was just wondering why you didn't put it on the form?
I didn't really, like, think of it, because on the application, it says if you've been charged or cited for it, and I was not. So I didn't think to put it on the application. And it happened four years ago, so it kind of slipped my mind, or I would have put it on there.
And were you asked about it after that, and was there a follow-up?
Janine called me and asked me, but I didn't really, like, know what she was talking about until I got the police report prior to after her calling me. So I got it, like, two days after she called me.
And you didn't remember that incident?
Until I read it, because I really wasn't cited or anything for it, so it just kind of slipped my mind.
Mr. Mahan?
Counsel?
Did you say you had a childcare license before?
Yeah, I had one in Chubak and one in Pocatello.
And what year was that? Was that just recently, or?
That was in 2016, right after my son was born.
You were licensed in Pocatello?
Mm-hmm. I just never renewed it, because I didn't pay attention, and I wasn't in childcare for that long.
So you were licensed in 2016, after the incident?
Yes.
When you applied that time, did you put this on?
Uh, no, and they didn't call me either about it. They just issued it. So I wasn't really sure why it was an issue now, and it wasn't then. So I'm not really, I'm not really understanding why.
So the license you had just expired?
It expired in 2017, because it only lasted a year. So it expired the same day I applied for it, which was in October, I believe.
Do you have anybody that's conservative character witness for you or anything?
I have Ashley that works out the daycare that I applied for, that she's seen me work with kids, and my mom, she's also seen me work with kids. I babysit my nieces and nephews all the time, and I have two kids of my own.
Okay. But I mean, so Ashley will speak on your behalf?
Yeah.
If you'd say your name and the city you live in.
I'm Ashley Zambul. I own Ashley's Place. I'm here on behalf for Kylie.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Ashley, you have a daycare facility right now, and it's a licensed one in Pocatello?
Yes.
And you can work in her facility?
Yes.
Okay. And beforehand, when you had your previous license, you had your own facility? Did you have?
No, I worked at Fox and the Hound daycare.
Okay.
And what can you tell us, Ashley, that would give us confidence?
I know her outside of work and working inside the childcare setting. I've never seen any reason why she shouldn't be denied her license. I mean, she's fine with the kids. She works with them. She has lots of patients.
I think she was, I think from our understanding, it's the denial was based on not having disclosed the fact that there was
Correct.
Possession of marijuana, but?
But she was also licensed in 2016 with this.
So we'll get that verified out?
Yeah. So I don't understand why it's
An issue?
An issue now.
Right. I've also worked in healthcare my whole life, so I have worked in healthcare and childcare, so.
Okay. Any other questions, Counsel? Thank you.
Thank you.
Janine, could we? Okay.
So what exactly does the application ask for? Is it just if it's actual citations, or what exactly is it on there?
I'll read it to you. So this particular question says, have you ever been convicted of pled guilty to or admitted to any violation of criminal law, or had a withheld judgment for any crime committed? So it does have admission to.
Do you, so how did she get a previous license if she had?
So I'm not sure whether she's referring to her license in Chubak. They license Chubak separately than they do in Pocatello. She had a City of Pocatello childcare license before the incident occurred.
Okay.
So it wasn't, it didn't happen. It wasn't checked at that time. After she reapplied, then I found it and reason for the denial.
But so there wasn't a City of Pocatello license issued in 2016?
No, there was not. I don't have the exact dates on hand, but it was not issued in 2016, or, excuse me, 2016.
I saw you kind of, when the applicant was addressing us, maybe kind of having a questioning look on your face. Is there anything else that you either disagree or agree with that she?
I guess probably I was kind of baffled by the fact that she thought she had a license. I'm not sure where she got that information. I told her why she was denied and the fact that she did not have a license prior, or when I checked it, she didn't have a license. It was before the incident. So we had that discussion, her and I.
And when you, and when you called her and asked her about that question?
Are you referring to the admission of guilt or?
Yeah, the admission of guilt question. Did she tell you at that time?
No, she did not.
Oh yeah, I did have an issue?
No, she did not. So I called her to, to basically see if that she maybe missed the question, or she didn't understand it, and then I went to proceed to say, hey, I have a report here. Here's what it says in the report. And she repeatedly told me that she did not recall the incident. And I tried to jog her memory by giving her dates, names, and she still told me she did not recall the incident.
Okay. Any other questions for Janine? Thank you, Janine. Kylie, would you like to say anything? Is there anything that you'd like to?
I'm not.
If you'd come on over here. Thank you.
I'm not for sure, because when I called Fox and the Hound, they told me it was in 2016. Maybe they got it mixed up. I'm not for sure. I know I did have one in 2016 because my son was attending the daycare I was working at, and he was only six months old at the time when he was attending the daycare that I had my license at.
Could that have been in Chubak?
It might have been. But when I called Fox and the Hound and asked when I worked there and when I had my childcare license, they told me 2016. So I might be wrong on their part. So that's where I got the information of having the Pocatello one.
Okay, is there? I'm a little bit confused why, when Janine called you and said, hey, is there anything about this question? Can I clarify it with you? Why you told her that there wasn't, if we have a record showing that there was an admission by you?
When she called, she asked me if there was anything that I missed on the application occurring in 2015, and I didn't really, like, pay attention to the incident, because it slipped my mind, because I wasn't continuously going to court or getting reminded that I had it, because I was just in the police report. So I'm not really sure. And that question is confusing, because it could be that if you were found guilty, like, going in front of court, and I never went in front of court for it.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm trying to, like, process this. I don't know if Janine has any further comment on this, whether, would, would you recommend how, because I know you sit on this licensing stuff, and what your best thought would be on this?
I do sit on the board for the Childcare Advisory Board. I don't necessarily have any recommendations. I do want to point out that when I seen the report and the fact that she missed it on the application, I was prepared to approve it, providing she explained what happened. But then when she told me she couldn't recall any of the incident, it's based on that, I denied it. Like I said, I really don't have any recommendation.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, Counsel. Seeing and hearing, no motion, then the appeal will, the appeal will fail on no motion. Then, thank you.
The decision stands.
The decision of the license denial will stand. And so will you explain to them? Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to Agenda Item Number Seven, Public Hearing Reconsideration Request of Hearing Examiner's Decision to Deny a Billboard Sign at 507 East Center Street. This time has been set aside for Counsel to hear comments from the public regarding a reconsideration request of the Hearing Examiner's Decision to Deny an electronic off-premise billboard sign at 507 East Center Street. The applicant is Performance Outdoor Representative by Blaze Sign. I declare the public hearing open. Counsel, has there been any expertise communication? Okay, then we would move to the applicant.
I don't know much to do, sir.
I better let you know what you have. You got a total of 10 minutes up there?
Yeah.
And, and then everybody that is, we have 10 minutes, and the staff will have an opportunity to speak, and then everybody that has any testimony will have a limit of three minutes, and then you'll have an opportunity for a rebuttal.
The last three minutes, I'll put up the timer, so you'll, that timer will start going off, so you'll know.
I don't think I'll be that long. Okay. I'm Greg Setner from Performance Outdoor Advertising, and we had our, we had our meeting with the other auditor, whatever she, what we are, and it felt like there was a lot of things that needed to be talked about that we didn't have time to talk about at that time. First thing we talked about in there, in here tonight, I'd like to talk about is, one, we put in our application, we followed all of the, all of the rules and guidelines of the application. We met and exceeded all of the criteria that's in the current sign ordinance. So then we moved into the notice that the, that we sent out to all of the landowners or property owners within the 500 feet. We had two people, two property owners, and two of the council, or two, one from the city and one from the state, that opposed it. The property owners, one business owner was concerned that the billboard would increase traffic at Fourth Street, and Fourth and, at the intersection there. There's absolutely no data anywhere that we can find anywhere that either, that says it will happen or it won't happen. So there's no data out there for that. So that's kind of a mute, mute point. And the other one was, one of the, one of the other persons there said that they felt like our sign was possibly going to affect the vision of their sign coming, coming up the highway there, or up the road. And when we did, we looked at that, and we took pictures of that, and I don't see, you know, I want to be careful with those guys, because we're all small business people. We're all trying to make a living here. So we don't want to affect their sign. I don't believe that we would affect their sign, or their sign in any way, shape, or form. However, in the, in the pictures that we sent to you guys, we made a, I put an alternate picture in there, and we showed that we'd moved the sign, that we'd be happy to move the sign from the right side of their, of the business sign, to the left side, which would put theirs out to the outside facing. We shouldn't, shouldn't affect them in any way, shape, or form at that point in time. The other, the other thing that she mentioned in there was the lights. She was concerned, she has apartments upstairs in her, in her building there, and she was concerned that there would be lights going, light going into her building. With a one-sided sign, and with the sign post facing to the out, or being in front of her building, the light will shine away from her building. There's no way that the light will go into her building. So we will not affect her in any way, shape, or form on that. So the next thing we want to talk about here was from Mr. Krantz's stuff from the IDT, and we're going to have Mitch Rayer from Rocky Mountain Engineering speak to you about that in a few minutes, and he'll take care, he'll discuss that. And then the, the next thing that was discussed there was, the staff alluded to the, the point that the sign doesn't fit in the surrounding area. And this was kind of arbitrary and capacious, you know, when they said there, there must be, there just needs to be something more definitive about this. When you drive up and down the street, there's billboards right there, there's, there's LED on-premise signs there, there's no residential area, there's no houses around there, except for the apartments, the two apartments in that upper building. We've kind of, I just don't understand what, how, we can just say that it doesn't fit. There needs to be something more definitive than that. I don't, I just don't see that we can, we can deny, you know, a request just because we say it doesn't fit. It just kind of has to have something more definitive than that. You know, our sign at, sign at Fifth Street, you know, it didn't, we were concerned with, you know, somebody was concerned that our stoplights would be in front of the sign. The sign at Fifth Street did not, did not have the lights in front of it. And prior to, prior to that, when we put that in there, we stood on the street with Mike Neville from the city, and we went down there and we stood there and talked about that sign location on Fifth Street in regards to that, and made sure that it was right. And he stood with us, and he said, if you put that sign here, you are not in the lights in any way, shape, or form. And that, we have had, built a really good relationship with Mike through the years doing this, and, and we continue to do that relationship with him. So, you know, we've worked on that, and we've made sure that we're, we are not in the lights. We don't want to be an issue or cause a problem with traffic in the City of Pocatello. Another thing that Mr. Krantz brought up was, he said that there was something to do with with the, the sign causing the signal lights not to work correctly through the lights when they flash or when they change. We've worked again with our relationship with, with Mike down there at the city in regards to this. Five years ago, when we put up our first sign, there was a concern about that. We went down, sat in Mike's office, looked at the videos, watched everything. And he can tell from his videos, from his cameras down there, any time that that sign, that light changes and why it changes. So we sat down there with him, watched those videos, and there was no problem with our sign causing any problems with those lights. So we've had that discussion with Mike, he's got my phone number. He's got, he said he would call me anytime that he has any problems with our signs causing any problems with the signal lights. Not once in five years have I heard from Mike Neville to tell me that we caused any problems with that. So we tried very hard to make sure that we've, we've met all the criteria, that we've not been, not had a nuisance sign with anybody. We've worked with all of you guys to make sure that you understood how we did the lights, made sure we were not too bright. We've tried to do everything we can possibly do to make sure that we're right on this. So I guess that's, that's my presentation to you guys. Please consider our, consider this and do what's, do things right for the city.
Okay. Yeah, absolutely.
As I go through this, it talks about all the pictures were taken from a height of three feet, five inches?
You need, this is a question that you need to have from Mitch. Mitch, Mitch did those and they took those, they did the studies for us. We hired those guys to do professional studies for us to make sure that they were taking these pictures at driver's eye level. And each and every one of those pictures was taken at driver's eye level from the different locations. So it's a very good question to ask Mitch, he's our professional.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Before we go, Mitch, you said that you were willing to try the other side?
Yes.
But I didn't see that picture, am I missing?
There should be a picture in there depicting the sign post on the left side of the Calladore sign. I think, Heidi, are you looking at right there, the white post? We put it as a white post on the left side of their sign. What we looked at was this, when, when she brought to our attention that she thought that we were going to be overshadowing her sign. The only thing I could think of was possibly with our sign, our post on the right side, that that's what maybe she was seeing. So that's what we threw this, put this out there and said, you know, we thought about it real hard. Okay, so if that's, that's a concern, let's look to move it to the left side of that. And that way, when you're looking at the sign, that would be kind of offset to the side of hers. So it wouldn't be in front of her sign.
So all of these are shown on the left?
That's, that's our new ones, that's our new ones that we did. We proposed this way, so.
I was looking for one that was different.
I apologize, the old ones, the old ones were, showed the sign post to the other side.
Okay.
So what we did is we went back and we looked at each and every one of these and changed it to look this way. Because we thought maybe this would be what, what would work for everybody this way and be, you know, more, pay attention to her needs or her concerns this way.
Thank you. Did you speak directly with her about the pole? Was it, was the pole the only thing she was concerned about? Or was she worried that just a sign is going to be?
She didn't want to meet with us anyway, so I haven't had a chance.
It might not have been a pole that was her concern.
To have a conversation with her. We tried, we tried to, tried to reach out and have a conversation with her.
So you weren't able to talk to her about the light not shining in her business also?
I was not, no.
Does this sign overhang the sidewalk?
No, it does not. If those in there, those pictures are, in those that you have right there, everything there is depicted exactly to scale, shows where everything is. So the setbacks are correct, the heights are right, everything is exactly like that.
But in these, it does look like it's over the sidewalk.
Like the pole's right by the edge of the sidewalk?
Is it, is the pole back against the building?
Yes, the pole sits back against the building.
Okay.
And the sign, the sign does not, there's current setbacks, you know, in the city ordinance. And we're back behind the setback on that.
So you're, the pole's right against the building and the sign would be directly like?
The sign flags, yeah, flags, like the post, the pole is back here and the sign flag's out like this. And the sign does not go past the sidewalk. It can't, it can't, it can't by ordinance go past the sidewalk.
So does it, is it going to be totally above the building, above the roof line? It's not going to be in front of the building in any?
Not at all, not at all. It doesn't affect her windows. We, we put the, the sign post goes between, I think it shows it goes between windows on her building right there. And the sign sits above, so it doesn't affect her lights to her building, doesn't affect her sign. Absolutely not.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, if you're done, Mitch, you have three minutes because we let him go too long. We asked him some questions actually, so we didn't let anybody go too long.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Counsel. My name's Mitchell Greer, I'm with Rocky Mountain Engineering Surveying. Performance Outdoor Advertising requested that we kind of evaluate this situation, try to pick a location that meets everyone's criteria. And I'm not going to go through a lot of the location, but it's in front of the, the Calladore spot. But I just want to go through some of the slides that you have. And, and you can see, you know, depending on where you are on the street, I'm starting here at slide six, six, I'm going to go back to the first slide. But basically, this is our general study area. I have a couple of more slides that are not part of your packet that I can show here as we move through. But basically, we took shots from where the cars would be sitting in the lanes at driver's eye height. And the question was, what is 3.5? That's the ASHTO accepted standard for your drive, your eye height when you're driving in a vehicle. So that's why we, we did that. And so we took, we painstakingly took a lot of effort to get these shots in the lane where the car would be positioned and, and focused toward the sign. So what we did, just to give you kind of a, a rough idea, so we utilized Photoshop and another program that's really a fairly advanced program. It's called ImageJ Scientific Analysis Software. That basically takes the pixels in the picture and you can, you can use the pixels to scale things. And that's how we positioned the sign in there. So what we have there is very, very accurate, as you can see in the field. We're very, very comfortable with our results. Some of the previous pictures and things that you guys have seen are basically taken from different perspectives, not necessarily in line with the, with the, with the lanes and things like that. But this, this basically shows some positions as we're stopped at this, at the signal. You can kind of see how that would be reflected. The sign post itself would be in between the two windows on the building, just to the left of the Calladore sign, and it would extend out short of the building. So it doesn't go out beyond the, the face of the building.
And just to be clear, it should be behind those cars?
Yeah, it should be behind those cars, but it's hard to, we didn't take the time to cut the pole off and do all that. So as you, as you move forward again, this kind of shows, and a lot of the concern is how it relates to the, to the signals itself. So we're actually, when I say forward, we're actually moving backwards down the street, toward Clark Street. So as you, as you kind of progress back, you can kind of see how that goes. The sign itself is going to be above the building facade, so it's not too close. So just kind of, I'll go quickly through a lot of these shots. So as you move further back, it kind of gets a little closer. So this is the inside lane.
Mitch, thank you very much, three minutes is fast and you're done. Let's, we have a question.
I understand 3.5 is a national standard. But we live in a community where a lot of people drive SUVs, pickups and stuff like that. I think that when I'm in my pickup, I'm probably about six feet off the ground.
Potentially. You know, we go by the standards, that's what, that's an accepted traffic standard and that's how we do our.
Yeah, but I'm just looking, you know, our community has some uniqueness to it.
True, I don't think.
I have to step up to get in there and to sit down on my pickup, which is a standard pickup.
You, you'll have to argue that with the transportation officials. I, you know, again, we go by that standard and that's how.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm, I'm just going from a very practical situation where I live and how I operate. I've got a Suburban and I know I sit higher end. I've got a F-250 that I sit higher end. And the other part of this, how did you pick your numbers for the distance back? Because I don't think at 35 miles an hour, any of the things you have are within the stopping range of 35.
That's, that's great. So not necessarily, no. But as you go, we do have some additional studies. So this is, this is further back, 160 feet back in the outside lane. So you can see that picture again, kind of, there's, there's the, the signal that we're, you know, the sides, the side signal, the two other signals there. So as you go back, and then you go back further, again, this is back almost at Clark Street. So you can see it just above the signal, it's very hard to see. This is on the outside lane on the west side, okay? When you get to the inside lane, you really can't see it very well as you progress forward. And so until you get actually about halfway down the block, that's when you start to see the, you start to see the sign itself. So this is kind of a quick rendition of where that looks. It's still, it's still above, but that's kind of when it comes into vision. Because there's a big tree there on the, on the inside lane that kind of blocks the view. And then also the, the building that's on the south side of, of Center Street there also obstructs the view. So yes, further back, we do have the studies, we, we still, we've done that. I just didn't include those in your, in your packet.
I'm talking about stopping distance. You know, that tree obstructs your vision, at least I would presume it does if you're back down the street.
It doesn't obstruct the vision of the signal itself, it obstructs the vision of the sign.
Yeah, but I'm thinking you go around and there it is. It's changing, it's going to distract you.
It potentially, it potentially can distract you. I mean, any sign can do that. I, you know, again, I don't, I'm not here to talk about sign distraction. I'm just telling you if it's in, if it's in the way of the signal itself.
The ITD highlighted that in their response to us. It said, there should be legal authority to prohibit the display of any unauthorized sign, signal, marking, or device that interferes with the effectiveness of any official traffic control device. And they've highlighted, it's highlighted on what I have here. And so I don't think we're the only authority for this street, are we? Is this solely, or is it also a state business route or something like that?
I don't know what the jurisdiction is on the, on the street itself. I think they, ITD probably does have some jurisdiction over the street, which is why they're commenting on it. So again, I don't think they have jurisdiction over your sign code. And I think what they alluded to, if it, if it meets the standard, we're not necessarily discussing, you know, it, it, it's hard to come back and say retroactively that you can't do a sign if it doesn't, if it doesn't work after you've decided it.
Well, we've had that experience with ITD. They made one sign go out because it did interfere.
Well.
That was out, we were going over the overpass on North Yellowstone.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with that.
They made one digital sign come out because it did interfere. And if I'm not mistaken, that's the same street we're talking about.
No, that's a different, I think that's a different location. But I'm not familiar with that location. All I can tell you is we did this study and, and it's not going to be in, within the signals. It's not going to be, the sign's not going to obstruct the signal itself. Now, is it going to distract your eyes? I mean, that's, that's the whole point of the sign, right? And so I'm not here to argue that point. It's, it's, that's the point of any sign. So, anyway.
That's all right.
All right, thank you. Terry.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. I'm Terry Newley, Assistant Planner for the City of Pocatello. As noted in the agenda, this reconsideration request is for an off-premises billboard sign permit to install a one-sided electronic off-premises billboard at 507 East Center Street. The proposed sign is to be measured 12 feet, 7 inches by 22 feet, 31 feet in height. Performance Outdoor, represented by Blaze Sign Company, requests a reconsideration of the hearing examiner's denial of their off-premises billboard sign. Sign permit, excuse me. The subject site was, is located within Commercial General Zoning District with an original townsite overlay. When an application for an off-premises billboard sign is in the Commercial General Zoning District and notices sent to property owners within 500-foot radius and three letters of protest were received, so a hearing was scheduled before the hearing examiner. An additional letter in opposition was received after the hearing examiner was published. And those are included in your packet. At the public hearing before the hearing examiner, seven individuals spoke in favor and two spoke in opposition. The hearing examiner denied the off-premises sign award. The applicant, the applicant raised concern after the hearing, which are in your report and have been addressed. No additional comments either in support of or in opposition to the application have been received other than what was included in your packet. Staff finds your proposal does not meet the standards as outlined in Municipal Code 15.20.240. If you should choose to approve the reconsideration request, staff does have recommended conditions. And that concludes my presentation, but I would be happy to answer any questions, Janee.
Go ahead. Is this street under some jurisdiction of the ITD?
Yes, it is a state highway.
Okay.
It's part of their state highway system.
So they could overrule us if we let it go, I mean, they?
Um, that I'm not sure. Corey Krantz is here and he could.
They, they did that out of Yellowstone, that intersection. They made a electronic billboard come down.
Yes, they did.
After the city passed. Second thing is, was this identified when we did the sign ordinance as a possible location for one of these signs?
No, it was not. No.
And why, why when did it, yeah?
We, it slipped through our fingers, we didn't. It was one we didn't even think of.
And does it meet our other sign codes? Because there's two billboards right there on top of the one building.
It, it does, because those two, those two billboards face drivers on Center Street and this one will be addressing drivers on Fourth.
Okay, and it's the 750, I think there's a billboard. I don't know which way it faces, down on a block to the north.
It's on the opposite side of the street, so it only has to be 150 feet.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, has there been any other correspondence? I know you answered that, but.
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Then we would look for any testimony of those supporting the application.
Well, hi, guys.
Surprised to see you here.
Yes, well, you shouldn't be. Great news, 6346 Old Ranch Road. Guys, we gave you the facts. So we spent six months, eight months working on a new billboard ordinance here in the city of Pocatello. And I think we did a really good job. I think y'all did a really good job. What we did was we followed the ordinances as prescribed and located a location and basically made an application for that. We also provided some information to you based on the Federal Highway Administration, which is the most recent study that was ever done on digital billboards. It's in your packet. It was done in 2015 and is identified that digital billboards do not, are not a safety hazard, period. This was done by the feds, they're the ones who pay the state or, or give money to the state to, for several state projects. In addition, we attached the crash reports, which has been, you know, and we are very sensitive to that as well. We, we're not in the business to try and cause any automobile accidents or fatalities or anything like that. But if you go into your packet that you receive, you'll see that what happens is, is that a lot of the reports that we, well, basically, we just took the reports and the criteria that we had. I gotta get to my page because I have more pages than I did. Is on Oak and Yellowstone, we went from 45 crashes to 25 crashes. So the actual crash ratio from when, prior to when the sign went up is that the actual crashes went down. Can we correlate that to anything that we have done? No. But we can't say that there has been an escalation of crashes. The same is on Fifth and Center, which is in your packet as well. The same is on Yellowstone and Pearl where there's a digital board. Crashes have gone down. The same on Yellowstone and Flandreau, crashes have gone down. So I am just going with the facts. Is that if we felt honestly that we were going to be affecting or, or potentially harming the public or, or drivers in their vehicles, we would not be making this application. But the facts are the facts. Is that the Department of Transportation from the feds say that digital signs do not. cause car accidents, or, and that is a definitive study. There has been no additional information provided by anybody. And our own data, and the data's available for all, shows that where we put our signs, we have not had crashes or more crashes. So I leave this in your hands to utilize the facts that are presented to you to make a decision.
Thank you.
No, well, thank you too.
Any others in support of the application? Okay, then any... All right, we gotta move. We gotta, we gotta have you guys moving. If you want to, if you're in support, then move on up here.
I'm, I'm pretty old, Mayor.
You're not that old. As much as you ride bikes and stuff, you're not that old. If you'd please sign in there.
Yep.
And then if you would hand that clipboard back to the beautiful lady behind you for her to sign in as well, it would be fantastic.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
And you just about missed it.
Oh, man, I wish I would have almost. I know too many people in here. And I was going to be supporting the sign that's going to go on...
Would you state your name for everybody out there watching?
Yeah, thank you very much. Barry Hunt.
Thank you, Barry.
Representing H H M B LLC. We own the property there. As far as I can see is, I've been told here, I don't know why you've denied it. I, I'm not sure about that because of the first hearing, I haven't heard that. But it sounds like to me that everything is put in order. I, I don't know why we can't have that sign there or, or what is saying the company can't have that sign there. If there's anything, I think it'll have the building this next to us. That apartment, that, whoever's up there, I, I grant you that it isn't the sign that'll keep them awake. It's this, and if it's going to block, if, if those, that sign is going to inhabit somebody from running that stop sign, Lord, it'd be, come on, you guys. Come out and ride with me. It ain't this, it ain't the sign at the side of the...
It could be the bicyclist that gets hit though.
It's gonna be. Somebody running over those bicycles or those bicyclers getting away with it. But people texting, come on, you guys, there, there's nothing to do with the sign and paying attention to those lights, Roger. It, it isn't that. I know that, and you guys, you should know that. If you don't, come on now. So I don't understand why it was denied. Corey and I work together on a lot of rides and do things together, so I don't want to make him upset, but I, I don't know why the, the state wouldn't approve something like that if it really is inhabiting those signs, those lights. I'd be real surprised. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If you state your name.
Nikki Johnson. I'm with Blaze Sign and Graphic Design at 7175 South Fifth here in Pocatello. As has been mentioned before, they have painstakingly gone through all the steps to make sure this met criteria for this sign. They've got engineering to take care of the, the view, the sightlines from the vehicles. And as you know, Performance Outdoor Advertising has several of the digital boards around town, and they are very responsible owners. They, they make sure that they aren't putting any obscenities up there or, but they're annual videos, they're following all the guidelines that you've laid out for them. The lighting, they've been careful to make sure that it falls into the guidelines that have been laid out. It was my understanding that one of the opposition's comments was it wasn't necessarily that it was a billboard, but it, because it was digital and the movement was going to be the distraction. We have presented studies that talk about the acceptable threshold of distraction for any driver, and this falls well below the two-second rule. It's .4 seconds. And just in case you were wondering, a static sign takes 335 milliseconds of somebody's attention away. A digital sign is 379 milliseconds. That's a difference, difference of 44 milliseconds. I mean, that's a blink. I don't think that that is enough to, you know, say this is worse than a static, a static board for sure. And I think that the reason there is a threshold is because there are distractions all around. This is not exceeding anything. It's not even close to exceeding the distraction time. Also, it was noted that this intersection in particular was the 12th in line for the most dangerous intersections in Pocatello. Doesn't say why. And, you know, perhaps a little bit of, a little more lighting in that intersection could decrease the, the danger in that intersection. It doesn't say why. Also, it was highlighted in the pamphlet here that there should be an authority to say no to any unauthorized signage. This isn't unauthorized yet, so, and there is an authority that can say no once it is unauthorized. Right now, it meets all the criteria, and I don't see that there's any good reason for it not to be.
Thank you very much. Any others in support of the application? Took you a second to learn, but you know I'm moving through it, so.
All right. Nathan Johnson, one of Thug North, Old Highway 91. So I was just gonna kind of reiterate a little bit of what you've heard, just, just in case anything was missed. We went through basically all of the concerns that staff had. They're concerned that the pole is going to be in front of the lights. Performance Outdoors painstakingly showed, they've got engineering to show that it is not in front of any lights at any position. If a driver was to get real crazy and cover up one of the lights, somehow getting off into the parking lane, in the code for the MUTCD on the second page, it says that "Two primary signal bases required as a minimum for each approach." This cannot cover two lights at any point, no matter what. So there will always be at least two of the primaries, even if a driver gets all sorts of crazy. But if they're following all laws, following in the lane that they should be, there's no way that they can be distracted with the billboard directly behind a light. And that's why Lamar's was taken down. Their board was directly in front of, or behind a light, and so drivers were losing it. That's why that had to come down. This one, like I said, they've showed that there, there's no way that it can do that. And as Nikki had said, there is very minimal difference between a static and a digital. 44 milliseconds is hardly any time at all. So we just feel like the distraction level that the staff is worried about is nationwide has been said it is not an issue. That is basically all I have. I think you've heard the rest enough, so.
Thank you. Any others in support of the application? Any uncommitted to the application? Any opposed to the... Whoa, whoa.
Do we have an...
I'm uncommitted.
Are you committed or uncommitted or opposed?
You were opposed. You were at opposed, that's why.
That's why, I thought I was an opposed, so. Any opposed?
Movement violation out there.
See how easy movement distracts us, Frank?
I was gonna say, Frank was stating the less tr- crashes, I think it was because of our texting ordinance that prevented those.
It's just better than that.
That's right.
Well, it's a coordination of signs.
Corey A. Krantz, District 5, ITD, out here in Pocatello for the Auto Transportation Department. You've heard that digital billboards are supposed to not be distracting. Well, neither are supposed to be phones, and yet here we are in the world of no texting, no driving with the phone up. A city will put up digital billboards and they are meant to distract because they're there to advertise. Are they only advertising to the person who's in the passenger in the backseat? No, they're there to catch all those single car drivers or single driver cars out there as well. And a glance up .4 seconds when you're moving at 51 feet per second is, is quite a bit. And if you look a little longer, why would we have crashes if we weren't distracted? Because you see those taillights. There's not a lot of people running around with taillights on. You can see them stopping. You did hear Mitch talk about the three and a half feet for an eye height. That's to see a six-inch object on the roadway for our stopping sight distance. That's what we use that for, not for looking at digital billboards. So ITD is opposed to it because it is behind a signal. And yes, you heard Frank say crashes can go up, crashes can go down. They are rare and random, but they're often caused by distracted driving. Trying to prove distracted driving is a very challenging thing, even for the police. No, no, I wasn't distracted because at that point now you were getting a different type of ticket. So, you know, admitting to distracted driving is a challenging thing for a driver. So, you know, I have not seen the new billboard proposal that had it higher, but I do know that in their presentation, they showed it being red, which competes with the signal. See, red flash up. Oh, that's a stop concept, right? Red and green and yellow are meant to be protected colors for a signal. And we would prefer not to have colored boards like that that are flashing up and down. And, you know, driver perception reaction time, per the information that I submitted, is about two and a half seconds. That's about how long it takes to perceive and react to a need in the street. Well, there's brake lights. I see it. Now I have to move my foot from the gas pedal to the brake pedal. That all takes time. And it may be time that you lose when you go to that intersection. It is the 12th highest accident location in District 5. It is 86th in the state. We do that on a statewide level, and we would prefer not to see that go up. Again, crashes are rare and random, and yes, you know, we made some changes at Fifth Avenue, at Oak Street and other intersections that may have created less crashes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
You said that three and a half feet isn't the distance that you use for that test, so what is? I mean, the height?
We don't have a height for investigating digital billboards. We have a height because three and a half feet height is about as low as most cars are. If you're in a truck, as Commissioner, or Councilmember Bray mentioned, you're higher up, and so you have a longer distance. If you have a vertical curve, and so that six-inch object is what we use in a vertical curve to view stopping distance. We don't use, we don't investigate digital billboards for height. We do for signs, seven feet, five feet. Truck drivers can't see through some of our signs if they're too short because they're, they're pretty, they're like seven and a half feet if you're in a big truck, 18-wheeler style.
Okay. So the primary objections are that it's behind the light and that it's red?
Or another color that may conflict with that, colors of the signal also.
Corey, is your testimony on behalf of the Auto Transportation Department a pertinent?
It is for the ITD. I'm the District 5 Traffic Engineer.
Okay. Any other questions for Corey?
So you really feel like it will be a distraction to drivers? And you, and within the, even though it only takes a driver, what was it, .4 seconds to look at it, that .4 seconds delays the reaction to other brakes and stuff like that in the intersection?
The .4 is just a glance at it. I'm looking, a council member, and I look at city council and come back to her. So I glanced at it, but I didn't have time or opportunity to read that it says City of Pocatello. I can glance at it, but I can't perceive what it may say at, at the distance.
And with lights that are moving in the intersection and with the billboard that will move at times, you see it coming?
It's distracting. We have trained our children for commercials on TV. Oh, come on, oh, look at it and watch and listen to it. So, you know, we have trained a lot of young people to watch TV. And what do they use? They use flashy things and they use, you know, they're not, hopefully there's no moving pictures on this because that will even be more distracting.
Our ordinance doesn't allow.
I know there are some on-premise that have that.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Thanks, Corey. Any others opposed to the application? Yeah.
You're showing up on both screens as people are trying to speak.
So...
Just, just, we're distracted. I'm distracted, so you're not showing up on there.
So you can continue to do that, that's all right.
You can continue to search, but just...
Sorry.
Good evening.
Thank you.
I'm Jerry Myers, and I have the property of 508 Center, where I continue to run my business. My major concern is it is basically 71 yards from my front window to the Calidora Building. And I am concerned about the lighting this close to my building. And also, another concern is for the first time in many years, this area has total occupancy. All of the commercial buildings down there are full. We have limited parking. It gets very congested. There's a very big increase in pedestrian traffic in this area. And I'm, it's basically about all I've got to say. I'm also concerned, but all this due to property values with a light like that shining to the front of my building. Another concern.
Okay.
That's all I've got to say.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I was just curious what you're, how you're connecting the parking and the pedestrian traffic to the...
It gets full. It fills up.
But in relation to this sign?
Well, this whole area has limited parking, right there in the 500 block of Center Street and along Fourth Street, there's limited parking. At certain times of the day, there is no parking, so people are having to park farther away, and in the process, they're walking to these businesses to support them. So there's an increase in pedestrian traffic because, I mean, there's no parking. We have limited parking in the area.
So is your point that pedestrians who are moving should be the first thing we notice there?
Well, it's something to consider. I, I mean, I've seen a big increase in pedestrian traffic. You know, it's, it's pretty hectic down in that area at times. I mean, there's a lot of traffic goes through that area. But, you know, my main concern is having this big sign straight out the front window of my business.
Okay. Thank you. Any others opposed to the application? Okay, then we would offer, I'm not sure if it's Mitch or Frank or who it is, to Gary to have a rebuttal of any sort.
Well, how about, I'll ask Terry one more question.
Terry, could you come up while they figure out who's going to be the designated speaker here?
So the appeal is on a digital sign. By our standards, it could be a static billboard. Is that what I'm reading through this?
Yes.
So, so our decision is whether we would allow a digital billboard or they could still go to a static sign. Just need to make sure.
Okay, hold on, Terry. We've got a whole bunch of questions coming up.
Sorry, I just got a quick question. You said if we were to approve the sign, you'd have some recommendations?
Yes.
And what specific recommendations are those?
The first one is that the sign must meet the standard setbacks for Commercial General Zoning Districts of 10 feet from any street frontage, and that is in our, our code, our sign code. And the second one is that the sign must meet all standards listed in Municipal Code 15.20.250, the electronic message displays. So that means the lighting standards, transition standards, no moving pictures, things like that.
And I'm assuming that the people requesting the sign will be following those codes? I mean, that's their, right?
Yes.
Kansas, but you know?
My question's for Mr. Kirkman.
Thank you.
Can I just clarify before Terry leaves?
Sure.
So the packet that we received with the pictures, that would be with the setback that you indicated?
I don't know. I haven't seen that packet.
Okay, any other questions for Terry while she's here? Thank you. Tom, could you step up here real quick?
Tom, there are three signal lights that face forward headed south. Are all of those coordinated so they flash the same? There's a turn signal there, is there?
Tom Kirkman, Deputy Public Works Director, City of Boca Tella. I believe when they're in flash, they all flash.
They're all the same, right? Okay.
You don't have a turn signal there, do you?
No.
No, no turn signal? Yeah, we'd be going the wrong way in a one-way street.
That's correct.
All right, thank you. All right, Frank, I guess you drew the short straw.
The short straw, I guess come back. Frank Newton, sixty-three, forty-six, Old Ranch Road. Again, guys, I appreciate everybody's input. I mean, I really do. I'm, we're only trying to follow the criteria that was set in front of us through exhaustive research by planning and zoning. We appreciate them. We appreciate Corey yet to stay. What we did was we hired professionals to make sure that we were not going to be in the signal of the light here. We also moved the sign over just to make sure that we weren't going to be in the business owner's signage. So it wasn't going to affect their business or their signage. And, I mean, I think we kind of proved that, you know, there is no statistics other than the reports that were done by the feds that say that digital signs do not cause additional accidents. And that's the federal government that has provided that information, which you have in your packet. In addition, we showed that there are not any additional crash statistics based on the signs that we, from before we put them up till when we put them up, that there's no, no additional crashes. So I don't know. I mean, I'm just using good judgment here, as I assume that everybody would use, is that if there was something that correlated and was statistically showed that what was being said is correct, we would probably step back and say, you know what, this is probably a bad idea. But the reason why we put them by the stoplight is we hope that people stop and then look at them, is that they're not driving through looking at them, because generally you're not. You're driving through the light. So, you guys, this is, I mean, it's, I mean, we're not reinventing the wheel. What we're looking at here is just trying to take advantage and opportunity for the landowner. And the ordinance that was provided to us by y'all. So we, we hope that you make a good decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
I have a additional question. Is that okay? Or do I need to do that before then?
You can ask.
What you should do is close the public hearing, and you can make a part of deliberation.
Well, it was for ITD.
Okay, I declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, this side is before you had to wish to proceed. It sounds like Councilwoman Adamson has a question for Corey Krantz.
So if somebody had just brought up electronic versus static, and I was just curious to know, would ITD's position be the same on a static billboard? Is the electronic element what is concerning, or is it a sign in general?
It would be the digital nature of the board, because it continually changes every seven seconds typically at the ones that are currently in town. And, you know, if you catch the last part of it, and change it to a new one, your eyes are distracted. They want to look at it. You know, and the other thing is, is, yes, we had trouble with the ones out here at Oak Street. They were too bright. We worked with the digital billboard. We did it turn down. It was affecting the signal. It was causing it to be going to detection mode, because we had video detection at that particular location. And it took a while to get it dialed down to where it was, would not affect that signal. It's the digital build, digital nature. The one over on Quinn and Hurley was a digital billboard, and it was directly behind the signal that was on the pole, mast arm standard. And it was removed. Static is there, and ITD would not be opposed to a static.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any other statistics? Because we're, we've talked motor vehicles, about pedestrians. I drive through this intersection three or four times a day at least. I notice a lot of bicycle traffic over there, because they, they ride from Old Town up to ISU, is what I would, and I see a lot of bicycle traffic coming and going. Do you have any statistics on that?
I don't have that with me. I would have to get that from Lori Byington with the Metropolitan Planning Organization, BTPO.
Okay, so you just, you just are talking about traffic flow?
I am. I would, the one concern I would have about a digital billboard is it might backlight a pedestrian there. LED light is perceived differently by your eyeballs than something like a high-pressure sodium or a metal halide light, has a different wavelength, and eyes perceive it differently. And that's why, you know, you're driving down the road and boy, some of these digital billboards, when they change color, it's just like, there goes your nighttime vision. And, you know, we have had a crash recently with two pedestrians at Whitman, and in the middle of the night, or just a couple of weeks ago. And there is a lot of pedestrian traffic, and there may be a lot of inebriated pedestrian traffic in this area due to the bar locations down here. In nighttime operations, there's quite a bit of pedestrian traffic at night in this vicinity. I can't tell you how many. I just know it's a number. And it's more so at after dark, and because of the bar scene down there, there is more pedestrian traffic down there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think there's some false conclusions being drawn here that are being blamed on digital signs. And we went through a considerable discussion in the sign ordinance a year ago. And we went up to Oak and Yellowstone, a performance outdoor, changed those signs for us, and we looked at those. And frankly, at the illumination levels that they're now using, a three-tenths of alumina over ambient light, you can't tell the difference between a digital sign and a static sign. They do not cast a shadow. They do not throw light out on the street. And I, I think, you know, it's, the signs are, the sign owners that are following the ordinance with a maximum of two seconds interval between images, and eight seconds they must be displayed, and they're doing it. Performance Outdoor is probably the only one in town who is doing that. As our planning department can tell, because I've been turning in all the signs that haven't been followed in ordinance, and there's a hell of a lot of them. I probably turned in twenty or twenty-five, right, Terry? A bunch of them, and none of them are performance outdoor signs. I see no difference, frankly, in a, in a digital sign that follows our code and a static sign. The image changes, but if they follow the sign, the effect on traffic should be zero.
Okay.
The expert's.
I'd make a motion to approve the billboard of 507 East Center Street according to Agenda Item Number Seven.
With conditions?
With, with conditions?
With the conditions specified, yes.
Okay.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. A motion by Chetum and a second by Manon. Is there any discussion that would?
I wanted to talk a little bit. We talked about the light behind the signal quite a bit. But we have here in the staff analysis that this is not compatible with the appearance of adjacent land uses. So up and down Yellowstone for sure is advertisement, you know, central. But this area is not so much so. So I'm just kind of curious to talk about if people think that's an issue for the businesses?
I would agree it's less than Yellowstone, but there are quite a number of signs in this area, both static and digital. There's some digital billboards, but there's digital, what do we call them, on, on-premise signs? So there's, and there's regular signage, on-premise signage, as well as a lot of static billboards. It was interesting in one of the images, the, we were talking about whether there was something blocking the view, and from one angle, one of the things that blocks the view is another billboard, which was a static billboard, so. But I think, I would agree it's less than Yellowstone, but it is quite a lot.
Do you think it's compatible?
I, I can't say that it's totally incompatible with that area. Certainly, you know, you could say it's very clearly incompatible in Old Town or something like that, but this area has quite a bit.
Somebody outside of the room, Matt?
I gotta think out loud for a minute. There's part of me that says, this is something that we allowed to happen because of the way we developed our sign ordinance. At the same time, we're hearing, and I'm going to defer, Rick, to the professional rather than you for what happens on streets in accordance with digital signs. He's saying it's a problem. And he makes his living doing that. None of us do. I do know that there's a lot of pedestrian traffic, as one of the people commented. I do know that there's a lot of bicycle traffic. And I think part of me says, this may be an appropriate place, but we've got these other factors. We've got a lot more people moving in this intersection than we do at Oak and Yellowstone. I'd say we probably have a hundred percent more people walking through those intersections, because there's people that walk, there's lawyers that walk from their offices to the courthouse through that intersection, a few. And so I'm really, you know, I think that there are certain standards that it meets with regard to our sign ordinance, but at the same time, I see a lot of potential conflicts, because bicycle riders don't ride with the flow of traffic. They ride against it often. Pedestrians can show up out of nowhere at that intersection, I mean, when you're watching for cars. So I'm really a mixed, mixed feeling on this right now, because I don't want to do something that encumbers the safety of people around there. And a lot of those people aren't watching for cars between eleven AM, eleven PM and two AM. You know, they're just trying to find the sidewalk, and sometimes the street's a sidewalk for some of them. So I'm really mixed on this, because I think we may be jeopardizing some of our people.
I understand the concern, but we do have walk signs. We have crosswalks. It is a commercial zone. They are following the ordinance that we've, you know, passed. If they're following all the protocol, I don't see, except, okay, ITD has a concern, but I think they're, they're following the backstop. It's not backstopping it within the, in the traffic zone, in the traffic light. So I, I don't know, I don't think I have, I don't have a, you know, I mean, I'm concerned, obviously, but if all the T's are crossed and the I's are dotted, and they're doing, following the lumens, the light and the sign distance and everything, it seems like they didn't do due diligence.
Okay.
You changed those.
Any other?
Chance to fully read through this, because we just barely got it.
Could I get Corey to come back one more time? Corey says no, but yeah, you can ask him.
I'm trying to think this all the way through, through Corey. Evidently, when we approved this sign out there early in Quinn, it got built, and then ITD did its own study, so to speak, of the impact of it after it was put in. Is it possible we could approve this? Can you guys do your own look at this and make it come out?
I was not in traffic section at the time of that change, and so I only have second-hand knowledge of what happened there. The digital billboard was installed, and when you were stopped at the signal at Hurley, it was directly behind the signal head that was on the pole. You could not see that signal head on the pole. If there were a lot of colors, you just couldn't pick it out very well, as I recall. And so that was changed to a static, and the digital billboard was removed.
So you don't know. You have to wait and see what it does.
We don't want to trump on the locals' ordinances, but that one was a direct safety issue. I would say that this new digital billboard shows it being in line with the signal on the side of pole. So it's going to be directly competing with the driver's attention. At least to a point. As it, as your perspective changes, it will move out of that window or perspective view, but it will be at some point, as shown in the pictures, that it will directly compete with a portion of the signal.
So you're saying, we've heard some testimony, that as long as you see a couple of the exhibits for signals, like a head and a pole on the right-hand side, that should be significant?
The MUTCD says you are supposed to have a redundant system. And we're supposed to have two signals in the primary direction, and this particular direction is southbound. Now, we are not prone, or not immune to having signal heads go out. We do have LED. They have a long life, but sometimes, you know, if we get a lightning strike, we can burn them up. If we have a surge in power, they can fail. And, and thus the redundant system, but even then, it can still, you know, we could lose two at a time. And our signal heads are aging, and the lights in them are starting, we, we have some that are starting to fail. We don't, we were getting ready to do a wholesale changeout on some colors, like green and red. They happen to be on the longest. Yellow is usually on only about three, three and a half seconds, depending on the intersection. For, so they don't burn out as quickly. But sometimes we're at the mercy of the diodes that are in the, and the electronics that are in the LED head. So, you know, a lot of surges may cause them to fail quickly. I do know that I had a coworker who had a Jeep, and that was the only light at times that he could see, was the one on the side pole. He was tall and driving a Jeep, and just where his perspective was with respect to his window, that was the only one he could see, so.
So the pole, if it lines up, especially when people are doing stop sign turns, stoplight turns to the left there, could be a thing?
It could. The other comment I heard, Mr. Kirkman, was that there is not a left turn there now. That doesn't mean. There may not be one in the future, depending on traffic volumes. Much like you do on Fifth Avenue, we have a right turn there in front of the Vannan County Courthouse to go up Center Street. We may at some point do a left turn there. It's not on our radar at the moment, but that doesn't mean there might be one, and then there would be another signal head maybe installed to accommodate that left turn to Center Street, which moves the traffic to a whole nother part of the lane where parking is now. And that would be something that would definitely be volume-based driven.
Is, is this light on the one-way street going westbound? I mean, we're headed south, but then we have a, a one-way street at Center Street? Or no, Clark, and then a one-way going east and center. Is that correct? What street is this one?
Clark is going west. Center's going east.
Center's going east.
Yeah, Center's going east. Is this Center Street?
This is Center Street. This is Center Street.
This is the one going, okay.
Yeah, this is where the Hattie place is. So everybody's gonna read that sign.
Yeah, so this is right at the light of the Hattie place.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
So.
May I make one comment before you go? This is a tough decision. The one comment that's sticking with me, Mitch said earlier, the point of a sign is to distract your eyes. We've heard arguments, you know, that that's a problem, or that's not a problem. We've heard comments about, you know, other signs in town. I will agree, the one on Pocatello Avenue and Oak, near that intersection, it's a little bit offset from the road, that one doesn't seem to distract me, but the one on Fifth, I'm, I'm starting to fight. So all I can do is rely on my own driving experience, that when that one changes, and I'm right by it, because it's very close to the road, it does distract me personally. So I think this would be a similar, where it's in a narrower road. I think it, I think it could be a distraction, so that's, that's gonna be a concern for me.
Sure. Okay, so is there any more discussion?
We beat it to death.
Okay, then we have a motion by Councilmember Cheatham, and a second by Manon. The motion, could you remind us what the motion is?
A motion to approve the billboard with conditions specified by staff.
Thank you. So the motion, Connie, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Adamson?
No.
Ray?
No.
Lorick?
This is really difficult, but I am going to say yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Then we will move on to agenda item eight. Thank you, that was a good discussion. We'll move to agenda item number eight, is love-to-bid subdivision final plat. Tanner Hernandez of Primetime Auctions, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering, is surveying, has submitted a final plat application to subdivide 11.05 acres, more or less, into ten lots. The proposed subdivision is located at South Fifth Avenue, Interstate 15, and Veltton Road, and is to be known as Love-To-Bit Substation. Subdivision. At the meeting on March 14, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of the preliminary plat with conditions recommended by staff.
You're up.
It's been a long day, and "substation" sounded a lot better than "subdivision" there.
I might have to use your phone.
Council?
Yes, Councilmember Cheatham, thank you.
I'd move approval of agenda item number eight, the love-to-subdivision final plat, subject to conditions recommended by staff.
Yes.
We have a motion by Cheatham, and a second by Adamson. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you, agenda item number nine, love-to-bid subdivision exemption from code requirements fell, a final plat. Tanner Hernandez of Primetime Auctions has submitted a request to exempt the love-to-bid subdivision from the Pocatello Municipal Code, Sections 16.24.080-110, specifically the requirement for a subdivision surety bond authorization to record the final plat prior to development and acceptance of the required public infrastructure and improvements. Improvement requires the subdivider to submit a deluxe, or a duly executed subdivision surety bond pursuant to the Section 16.24.110 prior to obtaining all required approval signatures from the city.
Mr. Mayor, could we hear from Mr. Hernandez, since he's here?
Sure, sure, he's here.
Why, Tanner, would you like an exemption?
Well, as a small business, we want to take one step at a time, and the subdivision process is a step, and it's fairly complex. We want to get through that, know the investment made, the time made, get everything done, and then make the next step, which would be the entryway.
Did you have tenants lined up for these various lots already?
We are, no, we're looking to promote the, sell some lots. We have the two leasers that are on the land, on the ground, so there's three businesses The subdivision itself is a big improvement, will help, help us get the, develop the land quicker and better. I think the, to explain what, we're meeting all the, almost every requirement, there's only one, one requirement that we're not, that we're asking for the variance on. And we feel that will happen in the near future, but we just want to be, we want to, we need a building, we need a roof, we need, ever since we've moved in there, we've been there 13 years, we've wanted a building, and we've made many improvements in the time that we've been there, and we've moved the sidewalk, and cul-de-sac, and landscaping, and so our, we're trying to put a building as the highest priority, and subdividing is part of that, so.
In the letter you wrote, you indicated that you were planning on construction within two years of recording of the plat.
We're trying all the time, as soon as we can, yeah, we'd like to construct a building, yeah. We're working towards that.
There's no, like, guarantee about that, though, right? It's just kind of your plan?
Yeah, it's up to the banks, and how business does, and those factors that are out of our And when we do apply for any building permits, obviously, there's, it's written in here that we have to go through the process of everything that's required with that. So we'll address sidewalks, and additional paving, and all of those things upon seeking a building permit. We're just trying to get the first, this first step out of the way, and get it, get it complete, and then we'll start on the next one. Being a small business, that's what we have to do.
So how soon do you plan to put your building up?
Soon as possible, but it's like I said, the banking is a factor. We've, part of what drives us is we've approached the bank, and, you know, they've told us that they want to see a building there as well, and they want it to happen, but they want us to sell some land. We're on 11 acres, we only use effectively six to seven acres, and so some of the acreage is unused, and so it's a bank request for us to sell off some land. We'd like to sell one to three acres of ground to somebody that would hopefully develop it and make it nice, because we'd like to make the area as nice as possible as well.
So you're gonna use some of these lots that you're subdividing then?
Yeah, yeah, the intent is to use seven, eight acres for primetime, and the other leases, and then to sell one to three.
Okay, thank you. Oh, we got another one.
Couple things. One, you and I are probably the only ones that know, did I talk to you when Costco was coming in here? And that we're just a couple acres short of providing an alternate site, which would have accomplished all this for you. Not maybe a bad location, but somewhere else. Second, I might be the only one here that remembers, we vacated a bunch of land, or right-ofways in there, a few years ago. So I guess I'm looking at what you've received back, in terms of land that was vacated as public lands, versus what, how much is this surety bond? How much are we talking about here? I've looked, and I didn't see it quite.
That's a good question. I think it's for the improvements. The staff thought it was in the $20,000 range, the improvements being requested to improve the main entry end, probably as low as $12,000, up to $25,000. We do have some preliminary bids in on it, and we would like to see it happen as well, and it probably will happen in the near future.
And so one of your contentions then is that if we waived the surety bond, it would allow you to improve the appearance of your property, and make your business more successful by being able to transition building.
It allows us to be complete with this subdivision, and subdivide this into ten lots, which is definitely, I think everybody, staff agrees, everybody agrees, this is a good step. This is a positive step, the subdivision, and the lots meet all the requirements. So to make this positive step, and not have any strings attached to it, and then look at the next step, and we'll figure out, we'll be with the city staff, and we'll apply for permits, and we'll work with RMES to decide where we can utilize our limited funds to make those improvements at that time. So six months from now, we'll say, okay, well, you know, we have this amount of financing available, and this is what we can get for that, and this is the best use of those funds.
I'd like to hear from staff for a second. Can we get Carl up here?
Good evening, Carl Henderson, Pocatello Land Department, for the record.
Explain the surety bond to me.
A surety bond essentially is a bond that's required for any required right-ofway improvements in infrastructure, in the total of 1.25% of the total amount. As the infrastructure is provided, that bond is returned to the applicant, once it has been accepted by the city.
It's a cash bond?
I believe so.
So what's your estimate of what the amount of this bond would be?
For that, I'd have to defer to Merrill Quell, for that ballpark estimate. Merrill has a second. Not trust my ballpark.
He's standing in line right behind you.
The surety bond is, Carl is man, Merrill Quell probably works, engineer for the city of Pocatello, sorry. The surety bond of 1.25% would be the, whatever it would cost to do the improvements, the sidewalk, the entrance way, and the 10-foot landscape strip across lots five and six. A rough estimate there, that penciled out, is possibly around $50,000 for that, for those improvements across those two lots.
That would be a $50,000 bond?
That would be $50,000 for the improvements, so one and a half, or 1.25% of that estimate.
$5,000.
Yeah, on top of that, so, so there. So that is an off-the-cuff estimate that we've done, would rely upon the developing engineer to put that together, to get the details of exactly what that would be. We were talking about, like I said, the sidewalk, the landscaping, and the entrance way, the main entrance way, is what is in the staff report.
So it's 1.25% of $50,000?
625.
$625.
Rough guess, rough guess, right?
Yeah, so 60, 6,500, or 6,000?
625.
$65,000 total, probably, on top of the $50,000, and then, yeah, it's 12.5, right? So 62.5.
It's 12.5% or 1.4?
62,500, sorry.
Okay, so, and it's 1.25%?
No.
Okay, hold on, hold on, let's back it up, let's back it up. You lost me back there. I was, I was all in at $620.
Okay.
You lost me about that point.
$50,000 for the improvements, 1.25% of that, that would be $62,500.
No, it'd be 620.
625.
125%. Yeah, 125%.
Oh, 125%.
Oh, I am sorry, it is 125%.
Okay, that made it. We got it now.
That's the difference.
Yeah. For a total of 62,500, for the, there, and is that, I'm guessing that's close to where we are.
Okay, I have an additional question about that bond. Are there any other landowners in Pocatello that have done bonds in the past that by us waiving this requirement would deem that to be unfair to them?
I would say that is very likely. There's been no waiving of those fees to this point. This would be the first.
What concerns, besides the potential issue with other landowners, would you have about waiving that?
I guess the concern that staff would have at this point is these two lots are currently occupied, and are at the frontage, and have been occupied and leases on those. If that was waived, there would be no building permits that would trigger these improvements, and the staff would not have the ability or the tools to get the improvements put in in a timely manner.
Only if somebody asks you to.
Oh, please, Tanner, would you talk?
So a couple things, I think there was a little bit of, we've met with the staff several times and had some meetings. There is, there's three cutouts in, in front of lots five and six. I had thought that we had agreed that only the middle cutout, the main entrance, would be improved. We have a lot of curb cuts along this property, there's more curb cuts than we need. And when they do get developed, those curb cuts will probably change one direction or another, they'll widen, they'll shrink. We even have in this map them changing locations. So I didn't believe that they were requesting any landscape at this time, thought they were only requesting the main entryway, a sidewalk strip, and a paving strip, that there was no landscaping being requested. So I'm a little confused by that comment. But the other thing is that Merrill had said, well, there's buildings on these, it is our hope and intention that these buildings be tore down at some point in the, in the not-so-distant future, that the buildings would be tore down, which at that time, we would request building permit, and then we would work with the staff and the city to make necessary improvements at that moment. So, I don't know if that clarifies.
It clarifies where you're at.
So, yeah. Thank you.
So I'm gonna ask Merrill one more question. My last question, I kinda, so your position is that the surety bond assures that the city will get development according to its standards along that area. If we don't have the surety bond, you lose leverage.
That is correct. That is part of the subdivision ordinance for recording of the plat, either to put the infrastructure in, the required requirements, or, or put the surety bond in place.
And Merrill, while you're there, can you address the confusion that Mr. Hernandez just mentioned?
I'm not sure where the confusion is. We've talked about right-ofway improvements, and the landscape setback, is the 10-foot landscape setback sidewalk, and the entrance way, under my understanding, has always been talked about. So I'm not sure where the confusion's coming. Also, in other past agreements in 2005 and in 2008, the same requirements have been required on these same parcels.
Okay, thank you.
Got a question for attorney.
All right, he's right here.
In lieu of a surety bond, can we make a condition that they would have to meet all? In lieu of a surety bond, can we make a condition that they would have to meet all applicable building standards and if they waive their grandfather situation? I think that's what Merrill was talking about, the rental, since they've been renting.
Well, one of the things the surety bond does is, it does that with the ability to do something if they don't come through on their part in the bargain. So the surety bond with it is a two-year limitation on getting that stuff done from the time the surety bond is accepted by the city. So what you're talking about is all those same requirements minus a surety bond, which you could do, but it would still be an exception to the ordinance that we have.
I know they've invested a lot to comply with what we needed in terms of improvements down there.
That's a main interest of the city that certainly needs some improvement.
If we could incent.
What you would be talking about, Councilmember Bray, is a separate agreement, but really with no leverage on the part of the city because we wouldn't have that fallback of a bond.
Can, can they put property up as a bond instead of money?
That's between the developer and the bonding company.
Okay. So they, they could do that with a bonding company?
But the bonding company, we would only accept a bond as per our ordinance that allows us to get the money that it would take to do the infrastructure improvements. So if they, if they leverage property to get the bond, we would still require, we don't want property as a result, we want the ability to pay for the improvements.
And to clarify, there has been no other exemptions to this?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I will make a motion.
All right.
I move that we deny the exemption for love-to-bid subdivision from code requirements or the final plat. Well, I was going to give my reason, but I guess that's not part of the motion. I just feel like we need to stick to the code.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Lurik and a second by Cheatham. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Lurik?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes, I'm already outvoting.
Manon?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. We will move to agenda item number 10. Actually, let's take a 10-minute break. And when I say 10, five-minute break.
So it'll be 10 minutes.
So we will be back, it's eight o'clock right now, we will be back and we will be running the meeting at 8:10, no later than 8:10. Good evening and thank you for joining us after our break. I just want you to know that as a record, the council actually got back a minute earlier.
We were here five minutes earlier.
The council was here, the mayor got back a minute earlier. Let me correct that. Thank you very much. We'll move to agenda item number 10, is access to mental health resource grant application acceptance request police. Council may wish to approve submission of a U.S. Department of Justice Office of Community Oriented Policing Service awareness and access to mental health resource grant in the amount of $60,785.60 and if awarded, authorize the mayor's signature on documents related to the grant, subject to legal department review. Grant funds will be used to develop a peer support group and critical incident debriefing group for police staff. There is no matching funds, but the grant requires two-year commitment if awarded.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Manon.
I move that we approve agenda item number 10, access to mental health resources grant application, subject to legal department review and authorize you to sign the documents.
Second. That was awesome. That was the first time tonight we've got people interested in moving. We have a motion, all right. We've got a motion by Manon and I got Lurik as the second. Motion by Manon and Lurik as the second. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Manon?
Yes.
Lurik?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 11, super paved asphalt mixture bid acceptance, street operations. Council may wish to accept recommendations of staff and award the procurement bid for super paved asphalt mixture to Mickelson Construction in the amount of $473,850, subject to legal department review. For the street operations 2019 pavement maintenance program, funds are available in the street operations fiscal year 2019 budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Bray.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the super same asphalt mixture bid.
Second.
Subject to legal department.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Manon. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurik?
Yes.
Thank you.
Agenda item 12, source water protection grant application, science and environment. Council may wish to approve a grant application and authorize the mayor to sign documents related to a grant from the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality in the amount of $10,000, subject to legal department review. If approved, grant funds will be used to conduct research to better analyze threats to the lower Portinup Valley aquifer. There is no required match, staff time will be committed to the project.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve a grant application to the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality in the amount of $10,000, subject to legal department review and authorize you to sign any documents related to the grant.
Second. We have a motion by Lurik and a second by Cheatham. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Lurik?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 13, Idaho State University M O A for stormwater monitoring, science and environment. Council may wish to authorize the execution of a memorandum of agreement, M O A, between the city of Pocatello and Idaho State University, I S U, subject to legal department review. I S U will be supporting the city's stormwater monitoring efforts by analyzing the nutrient inputs from the street trees, from street trees. Funds for the, for the execution, 6,000, are available within the science and environment division 2019 fiscal year budget. Councilman Bray.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the M O A for stormwater monitoring with I S U, subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Manon.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before we do that, can I ask Hannah a question, please?
Sure.
Hannah Sanger, Science and Environment Administrator.
What are we going to do with the results of this study?
Great question. This will be used to inform our street sweeping practices ultimately, so looking at where we're contributing, where we're getting a lot of contribution of nutrients, at what time, and so we can make sure that as our street department is out sweeping, that they're hitting streets that are contributing the most amount of nutrients to our system so we can meet our permit compliance. So currently, you know, it's based on local knowledge and the street department does a great job of analyzing where they're going to go, but we'll have some data to think about what, what times of year are the worst, looking at what's falling throughout the summer and early fall. And we know we have a lot right now from all of our winter maintenance and we know we have a lot in the fall when all the leaves fall, but what about in between and what is happening there? And this is a big issue nationally, is understanding these nutrient pathways and really thinking, where is the best place for us to manage those nutrients that come off of trees and, you know, is it better, best of management on the street, in catch basins and detention ponds, and how can we meet those requirements?
Is there any evidence that some tree leaves are worse than others?
Yes, actually, actually, yeah. So I, and I can't speak to that and I S U, the folks working on this told me, but I've forgotten which specific tree, but they said there's some, there's been some other university doing similar.
It's Russian olives.
What?
I hate Russian olives.
It's probably, it's actually, it's definitely Russian olives.
We're going to get phone calls for that.
They're all set.
It's Elms.
Or Lyndon's, there we go. I don't know.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
I can guarantee, counsel, I know what phone calls we're going to get tomorrow and next week, ma'am. Thank you for those comments. Okay, we have, we have a motion by Bray and a second by Manon. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurik?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 14, professional services agreement with J U B, J U B Engineers for the Hawthorne Quinn Traffic Signal Project Right-of-Way Phase. Council may wish to approve a professional services agreement with J U B Engineers in the amount of $62,647 for service to include right-of-way support, utility relocation phase, support, environmental document participation and environmental design plan review, support for the Hawthorne Quinn Traffic Signal Project. Local match of 7.34%, $4,598.29 is available for the fund 70. Please note, this is a joint project with the city of Chubak. The city of Pocatello's fiscal impact will be $3,448.72, once reimbursements from the city of Chubak in the amount of $1,049. Wow, it actually says 1 million. 1,149,000.
I'm playing extra zeros.
I will tell you, I know Mayor England is watching right now and he just fell out of his chair, but we appreciate that.
I approve it, it's written.
So I'm going to go with $1,149.57 is received.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve agenda item 14, the professional services agreement with J U B Engineers for the Hawthorne Quinn Traffic Signal Project Right-of-Way Phase.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Bray. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Lurik?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Agenda item 15, declaration of surplus property request engineering. Council may wish to accept the recommendation of engineering staff and declare the following equipment as surplus. A, what is it? Laika?
Laika.
Laika, Laika Viva GPS Type GS14 smart antenna. This Laika smart antenna was purchased in May 2014 and is now unusable by other city departments. If approved, engineering staff is requesting council's authorization to dispose of the item in whatever way is the most advantageous to the city. Council may also wish to authorize the mayor's signature on documents related to the equipment sales, subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we accept the recommendation of engineering staff and declare the Laika Viva GPS Type GS14 smart antenna equipment as surplus and authorize your signature on any related documents subject to legal department review.
Second. We have a motion by Lurik and a second by Cheatham. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Lurik?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 16, declaration of surplus property sanitation department. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of sanitation staff and declare the following equipment as surplus. A, to 2010 side load auto car exploderator sanitation has purchased two new vehicles to replace these older, these older assets. As previously approved by council, the purchase are based, purchases are based on the capital improvements plan stated in the current rate study. If approved, staff, if approved, staff, if approved, sanitation, staff is requesting council, to council's authorization, to dispose of items in whatever way is most advantageous to the city. Council may also wish to authorize the mayor's signature on documents related to the equipment sale, subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Bray.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we declare a surplus of property in the sanitation department of the two side load auto cars and that we, subject to legal department review, authorize you to sign the documents related to the sales.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Adamson. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurik?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item number 17, acceptance of local highway safety improvements grant, South Fifth Avenue Safety Improvement Project. Council may authorize, or council authorized city staff to apply for a local highway safety improvement, L H S I P, grant in the amount of $176,000 at the January 10, 2019 work session, with the following conditions. If the grant was awarded, staff will ask permission to accept the grant, seek authorization from the mayor to sign documents related to the grant, subject to legal department review. The grant was awarded in the amount of $205,000 and staff received notification on April 24, 2019. Funding will be utilized in fiscal year 2021 and requires a 7.34% local match, approximately $15,047. The project is located along South Fifth Avenue from Interstate 15, northbound, northbound off-ramp to Jason Avenue.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Lurik.
I move to approve, that we approve acceptance of local highway safety improvement grant for South Fifth Avenue Safety Improvement Project in the amount of 170, oh, sorry, 205,000. Are there any documents? Yes. Okay. I move that we approve the grant in that amount, accept the grant.
Do you also, in your motion, move to have the mayor sign the documents related to the grant?
Yes. Oh, I thought we already did that part.
Well, we did that and we authorized the application.
We're now accepting it.
Okay. We have a motion. Thank you. It has been a long day.
I'm confused.
Okay, we have a motion by Lurik and a second by Adamson. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Lurik?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 18, bid acceptance for lean-to structure at 2405 Garrettway. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and award the procurement bid for a lean-to structure at 2405 Garrettway to West Wind Construction in the amount of $102,000 and if accepted, authorize the mayor to sign the necessary documents related to the purchase. The structure will house vehicles and equipment providing protection from it, inclement weather, vandalism and increased level, and increased levels of service during winter operations. Funds are available in the sanitation department fiscal year 2019 budget.
Before we, I have a question.
Yes.
Is this something we should have bid? Or, you know, we have a bid, but should we have bid at wise choice or did we bid?
Tom, could you come and speak to the bidding process?
Thank you, Tom Kirk from Deputy Public Works Director. The new bid law is, this is under the threshold that requires a sealed competitive bid. We went out four quotes and we solicited three or four companies and we only received two. And this is the lowest of the two.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Nope.
Because if we don't, the attorney makes the mayor go too.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, Adamson.
Mayor, I move that we accept the bid and authorize you to sign any related documents.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Adamson and a second by Lurik. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Lurik?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Agenda item 19, discussion items. This time has been set aside due to discussion items not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. As a reminder, there is a 15-minute time limit, there is three minutes per speaker. I will tell you right now, we have one, two, three, four, five, six speakers, so one of We're going to go ahead and get started. Lori? We've got you here, so you don't need to worry about that.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of my neighborhood, city officials, thank you for being here this late and for hearing what we have to say. We are very concerned about the safety in the Tendoy Elementary School neighborhood.
Lori, could you give us your name for the audience?
I'm sorry, my name again is Lori Engelhardt, I go by Luke. I'm going to try and keep it short and not get excited, because I'm very passionate about this, and I'm very protective of the children in the neighborhood, as we all are. We have our signatures here on a petition that is asking that, to express to you that those neighbors and property owners who are most concerned and impacted by the traffic patterns around Tendoy Elementary School are frustrated with the lack of action on the council's part to help prevent that situation. We are requesting changes to the traffic patterns created by the city's renovation of the intersection at Alameda, Jefferson, Pocatello Creek, and High Line to reroute the influx of traffic out of our neighborhood. As it stands, police trucks, fire trucks, and local citizens drive over the median on Jefferson because they are so frustrated with the lack of access to and from the front of Tendoy Elementary School. Not about us, without us, for any and all future planning for our neighborhood. We are zoned residential, and according to the planning and zoning department, this is a neighborhood that meets the low to moderate income designation by the census, and we are working to become a neighborhood association eligible to apply for our own grants, as monies might be available through block grants and other avenues. This neighborhood needs to be protected and should not be a throughway for traffic that cannot reasonably enter or exit the front of the school or the neighborhoods above the school. We have witnessed police fire trucks and other drivers driving across the current median on Jefferson, as they cannot get access either in or out of the front of the school without being forced to come into Redwood and Linda, which are both very tiny streets and don't have the capacity to handle this traffic. We have counted over 1,000 vehicles a day. I personally sat and counted 88 in one hour on a very late Sunday afternoon when there shouldn't be. If you multiply that by 24 hours, it comes well over 1,000 cars a day, and we have videos as well of people that are speeding and being inappropriate in the neighborhood and don't reside in our neighborhood. We request formally that any and all planning being done by the city engineers include us, and we want copies of their current plans or ideas, and we wish to be a part of a work group to rethink and vet any plans before they are approved by the city. While we appreciate the fact that they thought about doing sidewalks, our initial petition was in rebuttal to that, because it will not address the traffic patterns, and sidewalk do not address the safety issues. We refuse to accept the email that we received from Ruth saying that we would not be allowed to be on any work groups regarding these issues. That was received this week.
Thank you very much.
And we are disappointed.
Thank you, thank you. Larry?
I have heard of Brooke.
Okay, okay, if you're here, here, I'll take it.
Can I get your speech too, so I can, oh, it's just your notes?
Thank you, okay. Larry, you're going to defer to the end if there's anything?
I will.
All right, then, we'll go to Bill Peterson.
Thank you.
Bill Peterson, 1965, Zalean, Wayne, Pocatello. My topic concerns the state of the animal shelter. I've got two primary concerns. One is the search for the permanent animal shelter director, and the second is the status of the new volunteers, bringing in new volunteers into the shelter. According to Idaho State Journal, March 21, Logan McDougall was referenced as stating the city will still soon post advertisements to find applicants for its airport director and animal shelter director positions. Daniel Garcia left on March 8. It's going to be 70 days tomorrow, and there's no listing on the Pocatello job website for the animal director. Mary Reimer left in 2015. We've been through three directors, and now have a temporary acting director who's out of the field. So regarding the volunteer program, March 21, Article Idaho State Journal, the Pocatello Animal Shelter is not accepting any applications for new volunteers, McDougall said. So in 2012, we got the $2.8 million bond passed for the new shelter, and that was due to a lot of hard work by volunteers to get the word out. You had a 72% pass rate. Here's an excerpt from Y Idaho City's website.org, September of 2015. This is a press release from the shelter. "We have been in the new building just over one month now, and we already can see the benefits of wonderful new building. The staff and volunteers are enjoying the spacious, bright environment and are much more relaxed. More importantly, though, it is the effect that we have seen on the animals. They are, they are so much more relaxed and healthy in this new environment, and we're seeing an increase in our adoption rates." Idaho State Journal, March 21, Logan McDougall. "The care of the animals continues to be adequate." So my conclusion is that the mayor and city council need to take, make a higher priority for the animal shelter and its needs, and specifically, I'm talking about a search for a permanent shelter director and recruitment of new volunteers.
Thank you. Andy.
We are right now, nine seconds, I think it was. Mayor and Council, Andy Moldenhauer, Pocatello Firefighters, Local 187. I wanted to start off by thanking you, those of you that were able to attend Local 187's 100-year anniversary that was on May 3, and I think it was a pretty good party, and I'm glad that those of you that were able to go were there. Secondly, I, this weekend, on Saturday, we're going to be having Fire Ops in Boise, which will be the state organization's kind of fire academy for elected officials and news media, and Councilwoman Beena Manon, and State Senator Jim Guthrie have been gracious enough to accept our invitations to that, so we're going to go over there and hopefully open their eyes as to what we do for a living, and it'll be a good experience for everybody. I'm going to keep this short so that other people can talk, but if you guys have any questions or...
Okay. Thank you. And by the way, that was a great party.
What?
Steve Landon.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Steve Landon. I don't live in the Tendoy area, but I have two daughters and their families who do. They weren't able to attend, or one had to leave early, so they asked me to speak on their behalf. I spent a lot, awful lot of time in the Tendoy area over the last five or six years, because that's where I go to see my grandkids. I've watched that neighborhood in the last year, or six months, or however long it's been, since that traffic altered pattern was put into effect. I've watched it change from a nice, quiet, family neighborhood where kids could play without fear, without, you didn't have to be too concerned about the traffic patterns or anything else in the neighborhood, as far as your kids were concerned, into a virtual byway. I mean, they've created a situation when they put that traffic pattern, changed that traffic pattern, to where the traffic has increased tenfold, or maybe even 15-fold, as far as the amount of cars that go through that neighborhood. And it's not just the amount of cars that go through there that create the problem, it's the fact that they don't obey speed limits, they don't watch what they're doing, they go through that neighborhood just like their, their intent is to get from point A to point B, and they use that shortcut to do it, and they do it without paying attention to what's going on in the neighborhood at all. There are absolutely no traffic methods put in place in that neighborhood. There's no clock crosswalks, there's no speed bumps, there's no stop signs, there's no nothing. You have a direct exit from Tendoy School that comes out of an alley right on to Redwood Street. The kids, twice a day, going to and from school, use that access, and then they have to truck, they have to cross either Redwood or Linda at some point during their trek home, and with no real safe manner of doing that. So the problem becomes to me that you need, the city council, you need to listen to what they're saying, because it's very true. You need to go take a look at that neighborhood. You need to go down there and spend a little time in that neighborhood, and see what's happening with traffic in that neighborhood, because the people can tell you, and I can tell you, and we can tell you with passion, with a passion speech, but until you go down there and spend a little bit of time in that neighborhood and take a look at just exactly what's going on, you really won't understand. Just literally backing out of my daughter's driveway with the grandkids in the car now has become an exercise in, where's the next car coming from? And you really can't see them coming all the time, because they come so quick, and there's so many blind spots over there, that you really can't, don't know where the next car's coming from. And if it's happening in her driveway, it's happening in every driveway in that neighborhood. So I would encourage you to listen to them, to pay attention to what they're saying, and to give them an opportunity to work with you to improve the conditions in that neighborhood. Thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Brooke Olson.
I'm Brooke Olson, thank you. Eighteen years ago this month, May 2001, my husband and I started looking at our house on Linda, and we went to look at it three times, and every time, there were at least a dozen kids playing ball in the road. One, a boy with no legs on a skateboard. And we loved the fact that we were going to buy a house on a street where 12 kids could play in the road, and they were safe there. We didn't think we would probably encourage our own kids to play in the road, but we liked the idea that if their ball rolled in the road, they could probably go get it safely, without getting hit by the dozens of cars going by. So when the talk of this construction out on Jefferson started, we've always been opposed to it. It was always a terrible idea. It was always just moving a problem somewhere else, and it's been very frustrating to us that from the get-go, what we always heard was, "Don't worry, they're not going to go down your street." And we always knew that was baloney. We always knew, of course they're going to go down our street. It's the fastest way. And so our frustrations for years have just been kind of pushed under the rug. Don't worry, don't worry, it's not going to be an issue. Well, it's been done, and it's more of an issue, more than we realized. My kids are not little anymore, and they're not having their balls roll in the road, but I hate more than 1,000 cars every day going down my tiny little road that is not even wide enough for two cars. There's busloads of kids getting off at the end of the street, middle school and high school kids, and the entire Tendoy Elementary School kids going through that neighborhood. It's a terrible situation, and it's been created by what was done out on Jefferson. And we need something to make it better. There's too many cars, and they go too fast, and so something has to be done to make that, to make that a safer neighborhood. It's not fair for us to have to deal with it. We listened to you just bait for an hour over whether a lighted sign would make it more dangerous to drive on the road, but it seems like a great idea to send 1,200 cars down a tiny little neighborhood road that is not equipped, just not equipped. So it, you know, the safety in our neighborhood is just as important as the safety down on Fourth, just as important, and it's important to us, and it's important to our kids. So thank you.
Thank you. Larry, looks like you've got a couple of minutes, if you'd like it.
My concern is the fact that there's no traffic flow controls on these streets, and there are blind corners and angles, and suggestions to do that initially would put sidewalks up. Sidewalks create tunnels. The National Service showed that. If there was some way to facilitate crosswalks, and I heard from, that sidewalks are required for crosswalks, that's not true. There are two crosswalks in Pocatello that go to dirt roads. I'll get the name for that. The second issue is we suggested non-intrusive strips to put across the road, at least to get the drivers' attentions. The cost of that is $1,800 to facilitate a solution, partial solution to that problem, and I did the research myself. And if you're interested, we can make that available to you, so that you, we can restrict the traffic speed and control. One of the suggestions in our neighborhood was just to get two big concrete blocks, put them on the end of Linda Street, Fillmore, and that would stop the traffic, and it sure would stop the flow. And then the people would, like the mayor said to me, go down the street and take the recommended street approach that was recommended, or at least conceived of, when this was initially set up. So anything to help us facilitate the traffic flow, it's really difficult. We did have a wreck down there. Eighty-four cars came down my dead-end street, had to be rerouted to get back out, which caused more flow. So that in itself just shows that there are major traffic problems related to the safety of the people, first responders, firefighters, and the children. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate you being with us tonight, thank you. With that, it has been a long day, and I would like to thank the city council for all of the work that you've done today and for your time here. Thank you very much, and with that, we are adjourned.